Go to, if you please lead us in prayer and rest your oracle, lead us to the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you give us. Forgive us of our sins and our trespasses and our shortcomings. As we come into your living room and sit down in your easy chair and begin to talk to you, we ask you that you would remember all the sick and afflicted. We pray for our soldiers and the leaders of our nation. Father, help us all to make the right decisions in every day walk of life. Lord, we thank you for the shoes on our feet, the clothes on our back, the roof over our head, food you place upon the table, and everything that you give us in this walk of life. We pray for those that have never known you, God, that you would touch their hearts. We give you all the praise, all the honor and glory, in a great and precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're ready to take roll. Machine ready. Okay, if you're present, vote yes, and then press your confirm button.
Wait a minute.
You need to vote on your machines. Sue's trying.
Well, I've got to get my machine going here, will you?
Okay.
Okay, it didn't work.
Did you press confirm?
Did not leave that the screen.
Oh, you're.
No.
Hey, David?
The red button?
It's white right now.
I did.
Terry Singley and Bob Walden are absent. Next order of business is our notary public applications. We have two, before we have six renewals.
Mr. Chairman, you forgot the approval of previous meetings.
Exactly right.
Make a motion to approve the previous meeting.
We have the minutes of May 21, 2012, in your packet. We have a motion to approve, I hear second, J.L. Davis, second, motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting. Any changes, any discussion? Okay, those in favor of approving the minutes, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Okay, does anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent. Okay, minutes are approved. Now, I entertain a motion to approve the notary public applications.
Yes.
And they have a motion, second by Scott Stanfield. The renewals are Eric Patterson, Patricia Tidwell, Brenda Hatmaker, Jim Gamble, Linda Perkins, and Dwight Osborne. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no.
You have to vote, you always vote. Unless it's changed, Jeff.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
That's something that I just like to really double double correct.
So we'll call the roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Oritt?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Stanfield?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two absent. Terry Singley and Bob Walden are absent. Okay, new applicants. entertain a motion to approve the new applicants.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the new applicants.
Second. Motion by our executive by Sue Nance, the new applicants are Megan Rebecca Stooksberry, Robert H. Brown, Amanda Beth Dispa. Okay, are we gonna vote both ways? Everybody in favor of approving the new applicants, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Okay, call the roll.
Atkins?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hatmaker?
Yes.
Nance?
Yes.
Oritt?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Stanfield?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two abs. New notaries are approved. Okay, next we'll entertain a motion to approve the committee reports and minutes listed in your book and as well as in the handout that you got tonight.
Motion approved, all committee reports and minutes.
I hear second.
Second.
Johnny Bruce seconds the motion. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Mr. Davis. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent. Motion to approve the committee reports and minutes is approved. Now we're to the budget amendments and funding resolution.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 6-1 through 6-13.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Budget Amendment 6-1 through 6-13. Do I hear second?
Second.
Johnny Bruce seconds the motion. Any discussion? Everybody ready to vote?
I've got a question, I have 6-13, my. Okay, solid one.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote? Those in favor, vote yes, and then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Alvin Evans has stated she has conflict. Sue Nance states that she has conflict. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Twelve yes, one no, two absent. Tom Hatmaker voting no, Terry Singley and Bob Walden absent.
Mr. Chairman, we have an additional budget.
We have an additional budget amendment. We need to suspend the rules for consideration of Budget Amendment 6-14. Motion by Bruce, seconded by White. Question or discussion? Everybody okay, everybody understand the, we're just suspending the rule? Yes. All those in favor of suspending the rules, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Thirteen yes, two absent. Rules are suspended. Now I'll need a motion to approve Budget Amendment 6-14. Bruce. Motion's by Bruce, seconded by Bobby White. Okay, now, any discussion, Jeff, did you want to?
Yeah, Budget Amendment 6-14 deals with the additional exposure for prisoner medical costs above and beyond the present appropriations limitations. Detail the exhibit in attached to front of 6-14, we see an increase in the medical and dental services line item from $80,000 to $180,000, and a decrease in the undedicated fund balance of $100,000. This is primarily attributable to hospitalization costs associated with prisoners in the Williams County Jail. And it's in addition to the regular contract for the ongoing services that are not relative to the hospital. We have a $50,000 cap amount that is included in the contract to provide for hospital charges from the contract provider. Anything above $50,000, we have to pay, the county has to pay for itself outside of contract. If you recall, last year, the exposure we suffered was about $140,000.
What's the contract with?
The contract for the inmate manager provider is a company called CNC Correctional Health Corporation. Previously, the company was called HPL Health Partners Limited. They merged with CNC last October when we had to do the revised contract with the here from the commission. That's been the provider for all the years we've had, with the exception of the one year that we had a guy from Merivol who left us in the version consent and ran the business.
Any other, Rusty?
Just happened a couple of years ago, I think under the previous administration in jail.
What second?
That we had a prisoner that had medical necessities that went above that $50,000 mark.
We've never been below the cap.
Never been below. Have you just checked in having the cap raised, what kind of cost would that be to us?
Dollar for dollar.
Dollar for dollar.
You can have the cap you mention once, it's got a dollar for dollar cap.
No negotiations in this, in this mix with the hospitals?
The first year that we had the contract, the provider did the services to the applicant. And they reported back to us that they lost $100,000 that particular year, and they wasn't going to continue that operation. And that's how we ended up getting the bid of being awarded to the guy from Merivol who said he would do it with how the cap. And he just lasted three months and went out of business. And we went back to the other people with revised contract provisions. The situation is, we already have a, to show you how dynamic the actual exposure is, Campbell County Government has a contract with, excuse me, with formerly St. Mary's, still in effect with no. We receive a 65% discount on hospitalization costs. That would mean that the numbers you see here represent 35% of what the real charge amount was. So the charge amount would have amounted to a half a million dollars before reduction for the 65% discount. Housing the prisoners in the county jail is a losing proposition. To show you how dynamic the losing proposition is, in 1994, the General Assembly through the Department of Corrections paid $64 for housing a inmate. In 1994, they notified counties that that rate would go to $35. 1994 was 18 years ago. We're going to receive a million dollars this year for housing state prisoners. If in fact, the rate was $70 per prisoner, then we would receive $2 million for housing those prisoners. So we're receiving about half of what the real exposure is for housing state prisoners. In addition to that, all pre-trial detainees that are being held in county jail who have yet to be convicted and being held on state charges, 100% of that cost is borne by the county. The state never goes back and reimburses any part of the pre-trial detainee costs. So at a minimum, Campbell County is losing this year, and will lose again next year, $1 million on the housing.
And it's not just only our county.
It's every county.
The meeting I was in a couple of weeks ago, TCI had the meeting, every county was represented. And they all had the same gripe. The cost per, the state gives us per day, and then what happens right here with our medal. Everybody gets stuck with it. You can't get rid of the prisoners, you need, the state needs to take them, they don't have room for them. It was probably one of the most interesting meetings I was in, that the county commissioners across the state took control of the meeting and told them what they wanted. And some of the state, higher state people left because of what, and it's not just us, it's everybody. And it's, it grips me, I must be honest with you, it grips me, we have to do what we've got to do to come up with that money. But we cannot go no other way.
Most of the funding problems that we have in county governments are directly related to the fact that we are in a state-fried state, which means that counties are viewed as a subdivision of the state. And the state mandates procedures, processes, laws, regulations, and they do so without providing funding for those mandates. And they force the county then to do what the law says, and you have hosing forces. The law says you got to put the prisoner in jail. Law says you got to hold prisoner. Law says you got to provide for the medical care of the prisoner. State says, I ain't going to send you the money for that. And you're stuck with paying the bill from your own sources.
And there's no way out of that.
Until the General Assembly changes the unfunded mandates, it isn't going to be any better, because the more prisoners that you have, the lower quality of health each of them has, generally speaking. Specifically with the drugs being so prevalent for the med and those kind of drugs that just drag their system down so bad. And it ends up with a tremendous amount of exposure for medical costs. One more thing I'll point out, there's some talk from time to time about, that there's a process where, that if you're housing a state prisoner, one has already been charged, and you have a medical cost associated with them, that in addition to your state board bill, you can submit a reimbursement form for their cost of the medical procedure associated with that prisoner. However, that process requires dismissal of a specific form. This specific form says that the chair must attest that this prisoner would have died if in fact, he had not received this care as an attestation statement associated with this dismissal, and he must be held in the hospital for more than 24 or 36 hours. So if a person were to be having what they thought was a heart attack, and you were to take them to the hospital, and they got checked out, and they were there 12, 18 hours, anything less than 24 or 36, and it was found out that in fact, they weren't going to die from whatever you took them there for, then you have no ability to submit this form. So it's just a piece of paper.
Tom Hatmaker?
If we think this $100,000 is bad now, what's going to happen when we get the jail, new jail loans?
What do you mean?
Well, it's going to increase that much more, isn't it? If you have that many more prisoners?
The prisoners that we have today are about 225. And if we end up with capacity for 400, then proportionately, you would have that much more yet again increase. And proportionately, if there were that was many state prisoners in there, then you would have that much more state revenue coming. The problem lies in the fact of the difference between the revenue stream today and the cost today. The million-dollar deficit, for lack of a better word, between the cost of housing them and the reimbursement method. And you're absolutely correct, the hole will just get bigger. It isn't a matter of the prisoner volume driving the factor, it's the differential applied to each of them. So the more you have, the bigger the number, but the proportion will stay the same because of the 50% loss.
So we're looking at another one of these next year, the year after.
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, yeah, there's no doubt about it.
We can't get out of business not having a jail.
And again, it's a series, there's a very good presentation that's on the CPAS website, I'll try to get you all out of copy of it, summarizes, it happened in 2011 or '10, I think, was a TC SA conference where this presentation was. And there's about half a dozen, maybe eight laws that are specific to the responsibilities of the sheriff and the responsibilities of the commission and all these parties to do all these things. And they simply skip the part of the fact that the state's reimbursement is half of what the cost is. A few years ago, until a couple of years ago, the counties had to provide to Tennessee Department of Corrections a thing called a jail cost report. And this jail cost report took all of your expenses, and it calculated how much you were actually spending per day for prison. Well, they discontinued that two or three years ago, and the reasoning for the discontinuation of this form was, number one, the counties have to spend some amount of time in preparing it. And number two, even if you send it to them, they're not going to pay you anymore because it's capped at $35. So their way of preventing people from knowing exactly how much the spread is, is by just discontinuing the preparation and receipt of the document, as if that's going to make it go away. And it doesn't.
David Atkins?
All that $100,000 is cost associated with hospitalization?
Almost all. Some small amount that might be for some other outside doctor care, but almost all of it would be hospitalization.
Are there any checks and balances as to any possible abuse of admittance to the hospital that would, that would assure us that there's not any abuse?
The contract that we have presently is a boilerplate of the same one that in your packet here, we're going to renew later. And it was, says in here that the evaluation of people going to the hospital has to go through their staff and their doctor and be agreed upon by the sheriff's representatives and all this myriad of different criteria that you have to go through a set of hoops and jumps to get to being dispatched to the hospital. So we believe that the controls are in place to best limited. But those folks, and I assume rightly so, have to err on the side of caution, you know? Because the flip side of that is, if in fact, you didn't perform it, then you got a lawsuit on top of the experience.
I imagine most of it's for emergency room cost anyway. I've never been at the hospital, that two or three prisoners weren't there in the emergency room.
Almost all of it would be emergency room, because if it were non-emergent, we have a doctor seeing them on sick call already under contract. So it's just, it's just a nightmare. The only year that this saved us any real money was the first year when they bought a good line in the cemetery and didn't have cash. After they lost money, then that ended that relationship. And it helps us manage it, and it helps us have unlimited exposure, because you go through the sick call, and that's cheaper than going to the emergency room, and so forth and so on. But it's just unbelievable. Now, in proportional dollars, it's better. The reason I say that is Gary Perkins was the first sheriff who brought this process into being here. Gary was sheriff six years ago now. Six years ago, we only had about 125 to 135 prisoners on an average basis. We didn't have the explosion until about three years ago on the volume just going through the roof. So at 130, that's about 100 less than what we have now. So for easy math, just say half. So you can see, in our exposure the year before that we did the contract the first year, was over half a million dollars too. So we were spending a half a million dollars for 130 six years ago, we're spending a half a million dollars now for 230. So it's proportionally better, but it's just killing, it's like said, the million dollars can't be discounted. That's just true easy math. And the General Assembly, until they do something about it, it isn't going to change.
More likely they're not going to do it.
Tom?
Put the bird back.
Tom Hatmaker?
Before I had rest.
I just had a quick question. Jeff, the 101, $39,000, is that sheriff's department?
No, that's undidicated fund balance. County general fund balance. Sheriff's Department is a department within the county general fund. There is no separate fund for public safety. It's a department within the 101.
So sheriff's department doesn't have their own undidicated fund balance?
Okay, we're ready to vote? All those in favor of 6-14, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anyone wish to, you got something else, Jeff?
Well, Singley's now showed up, and.
We need to do something different to give, allow him to vote.
Just go ahead, all of state anyway, so. Yeah, that would be better than, we can let him vote when we get to discussion. All you got to do is press his yes button in discussion, it means in prayer.
Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. Eleven yes, two no, Beverly Hall and Scott Stanfield, and two absent. 11 yes, two no, Beverly Hall and Scott Stanfield, and two absent. 614 is approved.
Ma'am, Terry Mash, you're...
Brett?
Yes.
You're yes, and confirmed.
And you're good.
Okay. Next is the continuing resolution.
We have a 92-day continuing resolution allowing operators to sit different this third.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the 92-day continuing resolution.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion by, or executed by Singly. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, one absent. Bob Walden is absent. Continuing resolution is approved. Next, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve all reports, county officials in all departments.
Mr. Chair.
Johnny Bruce makes the motion. It includes the reports on the handout tonight.
Second motion, Mr. Chair.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Press reports in the packet and the handout.
All those in favor of approving the reports, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. 14 yes, Bob Walden absent. Reports are approved. Next, we have the, under other matters, the contract for, between CHET and Campbell County for inmate healthcare.
Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the contract between Campbell County and CHET for medical healthcare.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Terry Singly. Any questions, any discussion? Sue Nate.
I do. The contract with CHET is for what amount? What page is that on?
Page 12.
Where? I don't see if it is there. 310,000?
378,000. It's in part of 8.0 on page 12, and 31,500 in 19 stops.
Okay, one other question. How much was the contract last year with CAC?
The aggregate contract this past year with CAC was 360-some thousand dollars, and the bid amount that we got from them for the renewal was about 15,000 dollars greater than the 378, so would have been 393 something like that. So this came in cheaper than the CAC.
Tom Hatmaker.
Right on down the page, Jeff. 8.1 adjustments. Can you go over those adjustments?
Say that again, Tom.
Go over the adjustment section, 8.1.1.
The inmate populace is estimated to be 200, and it has a 10% flexibility proviso that says up to 220, we don't have to pay you anymore, and down 180, they don't charge less. So it can move 10% either way and stays at the 31.5. If in fact it goes below 180, then we pay less, and if in fact it goes above 220, we pay more.
How much more?
As record, it's all abs.
How much more?
The, it's a basis of the per day amount that is calculated by the 378 divided by the 220. So you have it broken down into prisoner days.
So we've got 240.
It would go up by the 20% more than 200. You get 220, be 10% more. It'll go up to 3150 dollars a month would be for that month.
How's this compare to the previous contract?
Same exact length.
Same thing?
Same exact length.
Beverly?
Jeff, by using CHET and their clinic there, would that still mean they're going to be taking the prisoners to the hospital?
Yes.
Will it still go to the hospital?
Yeah. All that they can provide is what we call nurse call and doctor visitation, and they can, anything that's non-emergent, like if they've got a cold or something like that, they can see them and diagnose them and get them medication and that kind of stuff. But anything like if they have a chest pain, or gallbladder, or broke a leg, they have to be paid an extra.
And the pharmacy they'll be using, do you know the pharmacy?
No, it's included in here though. The pharmacy's not outside for us, it's included in the contract. So this is a hereditary operation, same as it was previously. I imagine that they will try to shop on an ongoing basis. The previous company had a nationwide network, and they told us, when we questioned them about local vendors, and they said they would use any local vendors that was being willing to meet their price. They never were able to meet their negotiated price.
So CHET was on what it submitted a bid contract for the county jail?
No.
Were they the lowest?
They were lowest.
David Adkins.
Just a side note for the commissioners. What'd you say, 370?
378.
Just keep in mind, we'll need to budget a half a million anyway, because maybe next year we won't have to come back to the undesignated fund balance to fix it.
I wrote a letter out today and sent it by email. The budget for next year will be $560,000 as compared to $540,000 that we're going to end up with this year, because we've been through this twice now, and this is a no-win proposition.
Any more questions? Marie?
1.5 and 1.7.
1.5.
1.3.
Okay.
Who decides here?
Not cut.
Who decides? I guess I'm confused.
The physicians for CHET, and the sheriff's staff would work in concert, and if a person wasn't in real need by their diagnosis, then we would not proceed to provide them care or take them to the hospital. It had to be decided upon and agreed to that they were in need of such care. You may recall that the county was sued this past year by an inmate who had fallen out of one of the bunks and had a hip injury, and the physicians on hand ruled that they did not need to go to the doctor, which would have fallen under this elective care thing. And they found out later that her hip was broke, and that's the reason we got sued. And 1.7, did you say?
Yeah. How often is that?
Almost all, I'll say, I'm going to say almost all, at least 65% of all the people who come to the jail have either existing medical conditions or medical conditions that will continue after their discharge from jail. And this proviso says they're only going to receive care through our contract, or by CHET for that matter, as long as they're an inmate in the jail, quote unquote, a covered person. And once they become no longer our inmate, any future care that they would have is not bound by CHET to provide or Campbell County to provide.
Tom Hatmaker.
Jeff, on 9.0.
9.0.
On renewal. This is just going to recur every year?
Can, what we ask for in the contract is they have to give us a renewal price by April the 30th, I think it's April 30th, May 15. And if in fact the renewal would be for the same amount of money, or even within some reasonable amount, 3%, let's say is an increase, then we have the option to renew. This past year, CAC gave us a renewal price that was within 3%, but the sheriff wanted to proceed with a formal solicitation, and that's how we got the product we have. So it gives the owner the discretion of renewing or not depending upon the rate increase being charged. We've never gotten any material difference between the existing contract in a year and the next upcoming contract for whoever the provider was. There's a company called Southern Health Partners, and they've been here two or three different times, and they always start off on the exact same song and dance. They're going to save you tons of money. And we went through the process twice with them formally going through a bid, blah, blah, blah. And by the time that you end up getting a contract that includes all of the provisions that the county wishes to try to contract with them, they have always been higher than CAC HPF.
If we got a renewal within 3%, then why would we solicit bids?
That's the, sheriff has the discretion to solicit bids at any time. It's not...
Have we had any problems out of CAC?
No, we have not.
If it ain't broke, why fix it?
It's with the lady's broke leg or broke hip. I guess you call it a problem.
On 9.0.1, under the renewal, it says the parties should reach the agreement. Wait a minute, it talks about increases and raises between the two parties. Will make the, decide on any increases?
Yes.
Is that within the contract date?
They'll provide us their renewal by no later than May 1. We will then, giving us the ability, if in fact we don't agree to the renewal price, to solicit for bids before the end of the term, June 30. That's the reason you have to notify us by no later than May 1.
I understand that. I'm saying, they can't come to us four months later and say that they're giving half their staff a raise and somebody agrees to it, and then we increase the contract.
No, this doesn't have anything to do with what they pay their...
I'm just talking about their investment, what they've got in it. If they, if they decide they have to have another piece of equipment, and they go out and buy it, and then they come back and say, you know, we had to have this piece of equipment or something, they can't come back and change the terms of the contract.
No, no, they cannot. It takes mutual agreement in writing to change the terms of the contract.
And who would, who would decide that on our part?
Well, if it had to have money related to it, then the county commission would have to appropriate additional money to facilitate it, and the sheriff is the major first party contract for it. And the way this contract works is the sheriff, the mayor, and the finance director require to sign it, and none of those parties would be able to overstep the county commission in this realm of appropriating money. So if it didn't involve money, then the sheriff could say, okay, I agree to that or not.
That's what I was looking for. It involved money, and you still have to come back to it.
Oh, absolutely. Harrison.
Any other question, discussion, ready to vote? All those in favor of the contract with, between CHET and Campbell County for healthcare for inmates, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. We have 13 yes, one no, and one absent. Tom Hatmaker voting no, Bob Walden absent. Contract is approved. We had a presentation at our building grounds committee about earthright energy, and we don't have to take any, up any, we don't have to take that up tonight, we can come back later and take that up. They're doing some contracts with Claiborne County and have talked to the, Donnie Poston with the school department to, and actually what they do is they just lease space on public buildings. And each system is 50 feet by 100 feet, takes five to six days to install it, and they pay, either pay a flat fee of $900 per system, that's per year, is that right?
Yes, per year.
Yeah, per year. Or 8% of the value of what the panel each system produces.
With a 20-year contract?
With a 10-year contract?
20.
20-year contract.
They cover the roof, all the damage to the roof.
They do.
They'll, they'll, one time, they'll remove them, let you fix the roof, repair the roof, replace it.
It's a 20-year contract. They figure that one time during that 20 years that you may replace the roof or repair the roof, and they'll, they will come in and remove their equipment so that the roof can be replaced.
They don't stand on liability in that.
And if they damage the roof, they will, they will fix it.
They will fix it.
But we, that's a...
Claiborne County's will be done in August, and we'll be able to go up and look at that.
It'll probably be a little bit of money for the reason of passing it off.
Well, it depends on, what was he said, 10, 20?
You can have a one-time option, says, you know, you can get that $900 a year.
Or 8%, 8% of gross sales.
Yeah, that's French.
Yeah, you could...
It's 50 by.
50 feet by 100 feet.
That's what he said.
It'd be, if it maxed out, it'd be $216,000 over 20 years.
And they would pay you somewhere in the neighborhood of $130,000 upfront for it. Okay, next is the lease between the district attorney's office and Campbell County government for their new office space. It's in the back of your package. Need a motion to approve that. Motion by David Adkins, executed by, rest of the order. No questions. Ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the lease between the district attorney's office and Campbell County, vote yes, then press your confirmed button. Those opposed, vote no. We're voting, Johnny. On the district attorney's lease with the county. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote. 14 yes, Bob Walden absent. Lease is approved. Lease is approved. Okay, last week we had some discussion about the, uh, Norse Ridge Community Volunteer Fire Department, about allowing them to assign eight thousand dollars of their yearly funding from the county to First Volunteer Bank. They have met with the, uh, school board, and the school board had a reversionary clause in the deed that was given to, or that was, uh, that, with volunteer, Pinecrest Volunteer Fire Department. And they have offered to make a settlement with the bank to, I guess, do away with their reversionary clause in that deed. And so, uh, I'm assuming that we can...
Or let's the property stand good for...
Yes.
Instead of us having to find...
Right. Uh, but we can still, they're still asking us to, uh, allow Norse Ridge Community Fire, Volunteer Fire Department to assign eight thousand dollars of their yearly funding if that's indeed what we give them. As payment to the bank.
We can't obligate ourselves for no term.
Well, you're...
Understand that, right?
You're just, you're just, you're just approving them to assign whatever...
Money.
Eight thousand dollars of whatever we fund them. If we fund them four thousand, then we can give them four thousand.
Right, and then they just end up doing what they want with it.
Right. Is that correct, Joe? Or how should we make a motion if we're agreeing to...
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's really no action that this commission either can or should take, in my opinion, relative to any assignment. Uh, that, that would be a, an agreement that would be made between the volunteer fire department and the bank.
Okay.
The, the commission would not be a party to it. You are not allowed by law to commit, uh, county funds to debt of a private company or a nonprofit, or you're just not allowed to do it under the law. If they want to enter into that kind of an agreement with the bank, there's no legal prohibition for them doing it. But as we discussed the other night, there's, there's no obligation that this commission has to fund any amount, uh, to any fire department. It's one of these, uh, discretionary actions of, of the commission. You don't have to fund any, any amount to any fire department. So, uh, you don't, you can't enter into a contract that would implicitly say that you're committing, uh, county money to be applied toward that debt. That has to be an agreement between the department and the bank. You can honor that assignment, but I don't think you can be a party to it.
So we...
It could change, and they could change, change hands at any time. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
Terry?
Is there any bindings, as far as the property, as far as this goes, Joe? I know you're talking monetarily, but what about actual physical property? Still the same?
If, if the nonprofit corporation owns the land, and the Board of Education no longer has the reversionary interest in it, then they can pledge the land to secure payment of their debts without requirement of the Board, um, approving.
So we're just looking at a stamp, a stamp of approval from the commission just for the sake of the bank, basically? That's what we're looking at?
What I'm saying to you is, and again, as I told you the other night, I've done work for First Volunteer Bank for many years. It doesn't have anything to do with what I'm telling you here to be any bank. You can't be a party to this. Your approval is not required, and it would be something that I don't, uh, think that you really have the authority to do, even, even by way of giving it a non-binding vote of saying we're okay with it. I mean, you, you just, it's just not something that the commission needs to be involved.
That answered my question. Appreciate it.
J L Davis?
And besides that, what these folks are proposing, side stepping down some factors and others, you're boarding on the slippery slope of select preference of the practice options.
I, I just can't make a comment about that.
No, I wouldn't either.
Marie?
I'm saying that the commission doesn't need to be involved.
Right, I agree.
Marie, Eric?
I have a question about the land part.
We have nothing to do.
The school board had it, gave it...
Well, they made an agreement to transfer it to the fire department with a reversionary clause in there that said sixty days after the, uh, fire department goes out of business or ceases to use that, then it reverts back to the school board. And the school board has made a proposal to the bank to, uh, do away with that reversionary clause. So that the fire department would own the, the building and land outright. Understand?
And that comes with a price, Mr. Chairman.
Do what?
That comes with a price.
I said they made a proposal.
Elaborate, elaborate, Jeff. What, what is the price?
Ten thousand. The board released our reversionary interest for ten thousand dollars.
She needs to make a ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so we'll move on since we don't have to take any...
Yeah, there you go. Appreciate it.
Okay, the next thing is the, uh...
It's all about property.
Is the approval of the lease for the business incubator office space with Community Trust Bank. They have agreed to a, uh, six-month notification to terminate the lease by either party. That's something that was, we can give them six months' notice. It's a three-year lease, but we can give them six months' notice and get out of that The, uh, grant that we were awarded through A R C, we've identified funds in that grant that will make the lease payments for eighteen months, which is the term of the, of the grant. And then if it's successful after that, well, then the folks that are in, in the incubator will be paying the rent. It will be self-supporting, as far as the rent goes.
We have to make a motion. I'm gonna ask a question.
We'll make a motion, then we'll let you ask a question.
Yeah, we'll make the motion now.
Eighteen months from this month?
You don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion, Jeff. Make a motion.
I'll make one.
There you go. Lease between, uh, Community Trust Bank and Campbell County. Okay, now Rusty.
Campbell County government is not gonna have any money spent into this?
No more than their match on the grant. The grant is already, the match money is already appropriated. It's just part of the, part of the...
Ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
Is our part, our bar? Is that the total? And the rest of it's taxpayer dollars, even though it's a grant. It's still taxpayer dollars.
How much is the total lease for eighteen months? It's twenty-seven hundred, that's around forty...
Fifty thousand dollars around there.
Forty-eight, something like that.
Eighteen months?
Eighty-three and seventeen.
That's in totality, grant and county money both together, right?
Sixty-four.
Yeah. And the grant part is...
Three hundred and seven thousand dollars and some change is the, is the grant and the county, the total monies. We agreed to provide a building for this. It's a start. It was gonna be the, uh...
Trail Manor.
It's the part where Trail Manor is now.
I thought there was gonna be a share of that. That was my understanding, that there would be a place out there for them to share, even after Trail Manor money, if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
What about that, hope you see it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Several questions or comments. The eighteen months ends when? Uh, started back in, um, either March, February or March. March, April. So it really won't be fourteen months of November. We've already been awarded this grant. We've already got the money. The money hasn't been budgeted? Yes.
Would you remember, prepared, I think, in February or March, in the region?
Johnny, I'd like to amend your motion. If I, if I could, if it passes, I'll make an amendment to his motion to approve it with a, uh, end of lease date of March 2013 notice that we're gonna be ending the lease unless additional funds are provided. That would put us in the realm of that eighteen month, um, end date. Is that right? If we say March to March, that's a year and then six more months, that'd put us in September.
October.
September, October. So if we have a notice of, that we're gonna notify them next March 2013, unless additional funds are received, then we'll be ending that lease in September, October of 2013. He's amended the, uh, has to amend the motion. Do we have to give a second for his amendment?
I'm gonna take a stab at it, Joe, maybe you've ever stood and answered it. I believe that if the original motioner will accept the amendment, then you don't have to go through that process, but I'm not gonna support it.
That's right. Joe?
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any questions now?
I have a question.
Beverly Hall?
You wanna name who the people are that's in the incubator? Everybody's incubator, incubator. Nobody knows even who the incubator is.
They will be here.
They, they, who are, what are their names?
Johnny Brownum is the, uh, assistant director. Todd Fisher is the person with Technology 2020 who the contract is with to administer the incubator program. Those are the only two, uh, and his employees that are disappointed. And they will be here on, uh, July the ninth, which is their workshop, to update everybody about what's going on, what they're doing, who they've helped, and the...
Out, Mr. Chairman.
Rusty Ork, do you have another question, Beverly?
I do. And we've got, and I know we've discussed this, but where are they at right now? I've, I've got a lot of questions, I'm sorry. Where are they, where are they working out of? Are they working out the air vehicle?
They've been meeting people at McDonald's.
Okay, how many people, how many square feet do you need, do they need to operate with?
Well, this is, lease is for twenty-four hundred and fifty-two square feet.
For new people?
You don't understand.
No, we don't.
And we've explained this, explained this, the purpose of the incubator is to help existing companies with marketing plans or whatever, or new companies or people that have an idea, to access through the incubator. The space that, that we're leasing, hopefully, new businesses will come and they'll occupy those cubicles as well, and the incubator will assist them in getting their, uh, business plan together, a marketing plan, help them, uh, locate funding and that sort of thing. And they will in turn pay a portion of this lease. Rusty, I'll go down the line.
I know, and it's...
Then I'll get over here.
And I don't know a whole lot about it. And I'm not against, against this, but at this point, I think we need to table it. This is my opinion.
Well, let me tell you why you don't need to table it.
Okay, you tell me.
They're out, they, like I said, they've been operating out of McDonald's and wherever. If we don't get them someplace, then we're gonna be liable to pay this money back if we don't administer the program.
And how much money we spend?
Well, we've got a contract...
I mean, there's questions, every time there's something coming out, there's questions.
We got a contract with Tech 2020.
Right.
Which is, we're gonna have to pay.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to kill it, Mayor, but I think the commission, and this is my opinion, and I just, and I've sat down here, this is my second term, and it got started up, I think, before this commission came on. And I don't know a whole lot about it. I know it's for the betterment and trying to bring businesses in and trying to do things, and we've looked, we've talked about certain odds and ends, doing, uh, grant riders and, and everything else to try to make ends meet, to try to bring industry here, and I don't wanna fight against it. It's hard for me to vote for something that I don't see. I can't lay my hands on it. I was reading, and this, and this sounds like a big story, but I was reading a little history the other day, and I was looking at Campbell County. And I forget, it's an eighteen-something when this county was established. It was established on the back of a wagon. And, and we've come a long ways from that wagon, and I know we've lost, and I'm not trying to kill, kill this. I mean, it, it may be the biggest thing we've ever grabbed hold of. But are they somewhere, we can just hold on to them for one month till we get to grasp on it and talk to these individuals and get their feel? That's my feeling. It's hard for me to vote for it when I don't see nothing's accomplished yet. And it's, and I've got a pipe dream, you know? I want industrial crew. I've hopped that, will it do any good? I don't know.
I've got another question.
I'm sorry.
Are they getting paid now for what they're doing?
They've signed the contract, yes.
Johnny Brownum.
And Fisher. And Technology 2020.
Mr. Chairman?
David, do you have a question?
Just a, just a quick comment, and, and the reason that I amended the motion, if Johnny allows it, is because a couple of months ago, we had done a budget amendment on this and approved the money. And the money is already there, and month before last, there was a lot of discussion about an industrial crew or a grant rider, what have you. You know, I don't know if it's gonna be a success or a failure, but you'll never know if you don't try. Um, in, in eighteen, eighteen months or less than a year, or a little over a year from now, you'll either be able to look at the people in, in business of the incubator and say, "The money's over, it didn't work," or "You've done a great job, we're gonna try to find you some more money." That's the only way I see it. I mean, we're, we're kinda midstream on this and we're, we're gonna turn it back around. I think, um, if you're, if you're trying to court a company or trying to better an existing company, you need a, a nice place, a nice environment to meet in and to, uh...
Nice ways to speak company.
Negotiate again. So, I'm like Rusty in a way that we haven't seen any, um, we haven't seen anything out of it yet, but we might soon...
I know somewhere down the road, we're gonna empty some off, and I'm gonna jump in the gun, hit us somebody who's on the speed. But we're gonna move, do some moving, there're gonna be some opportunity opens up here in this end. And I think the sheriff's office and stuff, and I'm not trying to take space from them, I think maybe Don has to use it for a while. It's a good office space, it's right located in the courthouse. And, and I know the jail's probably that far off, and I know, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to kill something that I know might be a great success, but it's just so hard. Are there any place right now, Mayor, that we can hold them for one month, keep them happy, without, and then bring it back to the commission next month?
Back in hours.
You okay? Go when you're off.
There's two people right there now, Mayor. Surely the goodness, they can walk up those stair steps.
If I was under it, I'd understand.
Uh, Tom?
Last week, I asked you about some county buildings, West fault school, city-owned buildings, that, did you look into any of them?
I checked on West fault, it's totally... Okay. Marie? You, you got something else, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you look at any other buildings outside of West Fall School?
We've been looking for buildings for six months. Something that is attractive enough to people would want to locate their business there. This has, uh...
Do you have a bill?
The space is already furnished, the only thing we would have to provide is phones and computers.
I'd like to drive Escalade, but I have to drive my pickup truck. It doesn't have to be the nicest of nice.
If you're gonna locate...
For the first year, we're just getting started.
If you're gonna locate businesses there...
It may very well be that two years from now, or three years from now, getting started, you don't have to start with the best.
Marie?
The grant money that we have. Open it, it's a hood. It does not have to be for rent, correct?
There's...
It just has to be for incubator facilitation.
Right.
So...
But it can be for rent.
And when we voted that night to allow the J-Sport, whatever, 'cause the promise of the essence, he was gonna move on if we didn't, I asked, "We have somewhere else to put this incubator in county property?" And you said yes. So where did you have in mind?
I believe I said yes, but...
Yeah. 'Cause we, I, I wouldn't have voted to lease something and turn around and pay more. I don't know, I'm like David, I'm all for the incubator, we gotta try something. A lot of things have not been tried in some years, and we're not getting anywhere. But... Is there no other county's space anywhere? 'Cause how much is it a month?
Twenty-seven hundred and thirty... Twenty-seven thirteen. Yeah, twenty-seven hundred and thirteen dollars. That includes utilities up to, uh, there's a minimum on that, uh, they furnish the, uh, maintenance and all that. Scott?
Businesses that we're putting in though are not... What capital businesses, I mean, what are you looking at? German pop, idea businesses, tree industry? I know you can't disclose a whole lot, but what's out there?
We have assisted some businesses that are already going. They're looking to, there's two other businesses that are wanting to start up, that they're looking at helping them get financing. And other than that, I don't, I don't know for sure what else they're doing.
So with your motion amended, if Johnny accepts, we're not out anything more than the grant match that we've already done?
That's my understanding.
Right. Let me ask the question, Mr. Marlowe.
This says three years.
But they've agreed to, uh, to this clause in there that either party can, uh, end the lease with a six-month notice.
I'll ask Mr. Marlowe a question. We're already obligated to the ninety thousand dollar match, no matter what, right?
I believe that we are at a minimum obligated on the ninety thousand. Because we have entered a two hundred thousand dollar contract that is a contingent upon getting grants, so if it were to terminate the, um, grant relationship and save ninety, you would then be trying to come up with an additional hundred and ten to give to the two hundred thousand with Tech 2020 contract. I've read that.
Question, that's a thought. Keep arguing.
Okay. Question's been called for. This is on... His amended, do we have to vote on his amendment first?
No.
It's the amended motion. And the motion is to approve the contract with, or the lease with Community Trust Bank to run, what was the date?
We'll go, uh, let's do, if it, if, if it's allowable, let's say that we'll, we'll enter into the lease and on March first of 2013, we'll notify them of a six-month, uh, non-renewal, and that'll give us plenty of time before the grant actually ends, who'd be out of that building if, in fact, we don't even receive any additional funding.
Everybody understand that motion? Okay, all those in favor, vote yes, and press your confirm vote button, those opposed, vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote.
Uh, it appears that we have the time, Mayor.
Eight yes. Seven no. Beverly Hall, Tom Hatmaker, Sue Nath, Rusty Orrick, Steve Ruthford, Terry Singley, and Scott Stanfield voting no. Bob Walden absent, everyone else voting yes, including the mayor.
Lease is approved. As amended.
Jay?
First deal won't come down.
Yes.
Yeah, they could've had a quarter pounder for another month, we could've tabled that.
Okay, Marie, if you have any. Okay. Uh, Johnny Bruce? Wanted to talk about, I wanted a motion approved to change the hour at the Lonishang Memorial Park.
Uh, yes, we, we'd like to, uh, the West Committee met and we voted to set the hours to nine AM to nine PM, and run that and move, uh, I guess to September thirtieth. I will, the time changes, we can go back to the regular hours.
Any quick, we gotta have a second.
I got a question.
Second?
No, somebody is saying.
Alvin Evans. Okay, Rusty.
What's it gonna do on the budget?
Nothing changes, nothing changes to ours.
Did you get all your problems worked out with the gate? I'll just be, I'll shoot straight. The gate's still being open, closed, bathroom's open, closed?
That's what we're fixing, what we're gonna straighten out with these hours.
Straighten it out.
That, uh, Rust, that was a, uh, a complaint that the department to us, and matter of fact, uh...
Okay, anybody else have a question?
Uh, I understand, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, David.
There were several people that called me with the same type of complaint about the gate being left open or not open at the correct times, and I know that Matt and the other gentleman only worked thirty-six hours or something, or...
Uh, one works forty-one, one works thirty-six, I believe is correct.
Yeah. Have you got that scheduled now to where?
This patient, yeah, we...
'Cause Matt was saying that he was having to come back in on his own time to lock the gate and do this and do that, and he really shouldn't be having to do that. I imagine there's probably not that much traffic or need for him there maybe during the day, so he might wanna consider working a split day to where he's not actually on his own time coming back in.
You tell him that.
There you go. Okay, we ready to vote? All those in favor of changing the park hours to nine to nine through September, vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed, vote no. Alvin Evans, need you to vote. Okay, anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent, motion is approved. Okay, next order is Tom Hatmaker, speed limit on Rider Lane.
Okay, spoke with Jim Bowles, he's with the City of LaFollette. Part of this, and I also spoke with Dennis, part of this, or about half this road is in the city, half of it's in the county, the city has no problem with changing this speed limit where we go twenty-twenty-five, whatever we decide. The whole reason for decreasing the speed limit's 'cause it's congested area, there's some apartments in there, and there's a lot of kids in there right now. Dennis said he would put the signs up. Seal of LaFollette has a meeting the last Monday this month, I think that's correct? Workshop is last Monday and meeting's first Monday. So I'm gonna go to the workshop, tell them what we do here tonight, if we do it, and then they'll bring it up in their regular meeting on the first Monday.
Okay.
Was it Rider Lane or Ellison Road?
Rider. It's the one that goes right beside Danny Marcy's car out there, goes back in the back.
It goes out to Hacks, we've been on, that's Ellison.
Huh?
That's Ellison.
Is it Ellison?
City owned.
I thought Dennis said Rider, I'm sorry. Okay, well, it's, it's the one that goes next to Danny's.
I got thinking about this week, and I, and I was actually through there, and I said, "It's, it's got a thirty."
It's got thirty on it now.
But the majority of it's in the city.
Correct.
And Hacks built, Hack and, and the province boys built all of those new apartments back in there.
I guess.
So what's gonna be your motion?
Well, I would ask, do y'all prefer twenty or twenty-five? On a decrease? My motion's gonna be to decrease the speed limit to...
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Tom, did Dennis recommend anything?
Dennis is fine with this.
I mean, I don't understand that, did he recommend any type of speed limit?
He didn't, he said whatever we suggested.
So we're setting a speed limit, or we're, motion is, do we have a second to set the speed limit on Ellison Lane at twenty-five?
I second. I second.
Okay, any more discussion?
Ellison Road, does Rider Lane, right, Tom?
Correct, Ellison instead of Rider.
Let's just make it both.
Make it both of them. Make it both of them.
Ellison and Rider.
They both have apartments and they're both congested.
Yeah.
So you're amending your motion to say, you're making the motion to say, uh, Rider Lane and Ellison Lane?
And the lap, it joins them.
And the lap. I'll be, have, set the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour.
And the four lane.
I don't wanna make no more confusion either.
Ellison Lane and the lap.
You got one, Rusty?
There, that whole section out there is broke up by six different places, you got Big Springs, Pirate Street, the lap lane. Let's just start with them two, then we'll come back, we'll have...
We got three.
We got three, the lap.
Yeah, we got the lap, Rider Lane, and Ellison Lane. Twenty-five miles an hour.
And the lap, maybe, it crosses, it may be in the city.
Rider Lane, Ellison Lane, and the lap lane, we're setting all of them at twenty-five miles an hour, this is the motion. And, yes, Bobby White?
Who's going to enforce it?
The city will enforce the city. I don't know, gotta talk to them about the county.
Well, I mean, you know, we have speed limits over the county, and, uh, Sheriff, uh, Chief Deputy, how many radars do we have on cars? Not all. Okay.
Any other question? But we're working on it. No more questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor of, uh, changing the speed limit or setting the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour on those streets, vote yes, then press your confirm button. Anybody wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Okay, we got thirteen yes, Terry Singley voted no, and Bob Walden is absent. Motion is approved. Sue Nath?
Okay, I have on here to, uh, make a motion to release the three thousand dollars that's in the one-seventy-one fund to be released to the fire departments with no stipulation that it has to have matching grants.
Do you mean one-on-one?
Is it supposed to be one-on-one? Well, somebody misled me. If you say it's one-on-one, it's...
The five thousand dollars was in the one-seventy-one fund, and that is actually already...
It's already been done, right, so it's one-on-one? Okay.
I'll second her motion.
No, say that again, Sue.
Okay. To release the, uh, three thousand dollars to the volunteer fire departments that's in the one-on-one fund, to be, for the volunteer fire departments to be able to access this money without the stipulation that it be tied to matching grants.
Are you going to allow it to be used for equipment purchase, like the note on the thing that you says, or you're just gonna make it for whatever they wanna spend?
You have a strong suggestion on that?
I would suggest that equipment.
Just for equipment?
'Cause you're already, you're already, they have available the five thousand dollars for...
Equipment.
Capital project.
Let me tell you this, and...
Capital project, class equipment.
Yeah. Ridge wood, I don't, I wanna say ridge view, but it's ridge wood. Needs a, of course, I understand, they maybe do not own the building, is that correct?
We got the leases worked out just the other day.
Okay, they need a, uh, they need their roof, a new roof on that building.
I would say that the five thousand dollar item that's already available in the one-seventy-one fund would fit out under that because it's allowing them to use any...
But I, I don't think they can do it for five thousand dollars, I had roofs put on houses recently, and it's much more than five.
If you want to make it to be like the mayor suggested for some type of capital, uh, purchase, then that would be fine, I'm just trying to be sure that you weren't gonna allow it to be for fuel or some consumable item as opposed to a capital.
I'm really interested in Ridge Wood getting a top on the building, so however we need to put that.
I would say that you're gonna release, make it available to them to be used for outdoor purposes.
Mr. Chairman, how much money are we talking about in totality across?
There's seven, is there seven?
Three thousand times seven into twelve.
Okay, so it's available for each volunteer fire department?
And it's already in the budget.
All right, yeah, I knew it was, I just wondered how much, how many fire department?
I have, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask one fire case question. We set up some procedures for five thousand dollars in our mayor's office just, uh, a couple of weeks ago, that tells them, okay, here's how you go about making access, you're gonna have to come, tell them the project, get a purchase requisition, comply with all this, blah, 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 and we'll pay them. We're now, today being the eighteenth day of June, the cutoff date most important is ended on the fifteenth day of June. We can extend that and try to operate through the thirtieth day of June, but there's no way that the majority of these folks are gonna be able to make access to these funds before June the third.
Carryover?
The question I'm driving to is, are you going to, uh, establish a carryover procedure for this, and my recommendation would be, even if we hadn't switched this, that the budget may not be predicated upon a carryover procedure, that anything that didn't get used in any one year gets carried over and re-appropriated in the next year such that, let's say that none of it's been before June thirtieth, and the commission decides to do this three thousand dollar program again in the twelve-thirteen budget, then you'd be looking at each of those entities getting six thousand dollars as opposed to three thousand.
But we did that for the five thousand, it could be carried over.
I think...
Yes, but, but I...
I think we should.
I, I agree with it, if it takes a commission, I can't just choose it for you, it needs to be included in your motion, if it isn't used by six-thirty-two thousand twelve, it'll be carried over into the six-thirty-two thousand thirteen budget.
I need that...
But they have to meet...
Did you get it?
Have to meet all that criteria that the commission passed about two months ago, before they can get any of them.
That's correct.
Be good if we could do the whole county that way, and so that everybody spend their man's annual budget.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion, do we ever get a...
Yeah, Rusty did.
Rusty, you got another question?
No, he didn't, he get it wrong.
Anybody have a question? Okay, the motion is to...
Release.
Release the $3,000 that's in the, in the 101 fund to be used by volunteer fire departments, rescue squads, to make capital outlay purchases.
I didn't say rescue squads, are they included in that?
They're included.
Okay, that's fine.
And if the $3,000 may be carried over, if unused in one budget year can be carried over to the next budget. Everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor, vote yes, then press the confirm button, those opposed vote no. Anyone wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Motion is approved. Anything else, Miss Sue?
Let's ask, thank you.
Scott, anything about the House foreclosures?
Yeah, my question, Joe, did you ever find out anything we can do about the foreclosed homes right here that's letting the grass and weeds grow up around them?
Well, first of all, I think we discussed at the workshop how difficult it is to talk with...
Banks.
Banks, you know, but it's very, very hard to get somebody to talk with you about it, and there are many of these around. Having said that, you know, you can't, if you decide you want to adopt some kind of regulations, you can't spot regulate a particular property. You have to have regulations that would apply for property uniformly countywide, but not within municipalities. So you would have to first define what it is you're wanting to regulate. How high do weeds or grass have to be, what do you consider to be overgrown vegetation? You got lawns, you got fields, you got woods, you know, what are you wanting to define as being the objective of what you want to regulate? That would be the first thing. You would need to consider how you, who you want to inspect, and, and how, how those people would send notices of violation or citations to persons that would be alleged to be in violation of, of the regulation. Performing that function, I have no idea what would be, you don't have anything budgeted for something like that now. So probably the best thing, if the commission wants to consider moving forward with the resolution, would be to, to have this referred to an appropriate committee to, to discuss these issues and decide how you would want to proceed with it, the definition of what you would be trying to regulate, who would be in it, how it would be paid for, and then bring it back to the commission for further consideration and action as it seems appropriate, and again, it would take ten votes to, to adopt it. So it's not just as easy as saying, you know, we're all against overrun lots, you know, you gotta define what that is and, and how you would be dealing with it.
My question was just the ones the bank owns, I mean, there's one in my neighborhood that's been empty, it's been vacated for almost two years now, and we've got weeds up over your shoulders and trees going through the back porch, and it's J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, I've tried to call them several times myself. You know, banks, you would think they would keep them mowed, trying to sell them, I mean, I'd rather see the people staying in the homes and keeping it cleaned and letting it grow up and becoming a nuisance.
There's, there's a lot of things about foreclosed property that doesn't make sense, and you think that lenders would walk on them, pay them, but there's just so many of them, they just don't... I, I don't think, and this is my own opinion here, that, I don't think it would be possible for a commission or county government to adopt a regulation that would be focused only for banks that own foreclosed property. I, I think you would have, it would have to be a regulation that would apply to unit property that would fall within that category.
Scott, do you want to refer this to the Ways and Means Committee?
Yeah.
Now Jeff, did you have some?
Yeah, I have a question, Joe. How would it be possible for the accounting to expend public funds, homes, private property?
Well, you, you would have, that's one of the things that we would have to try to figure out, you know, what the, what does the commission want to try to achieve, and then we would look and see, how could it be done? You know, I, I don't, we don't have zoning, you know, and as I've explained to the commission several times, County Powers Act is not equivalent to zoning. It doesn't give you the same kind of powers that you would have with zoning. If you decide in principle that you want to pursue this type of regulation, then what we would do would be to try to figure out what, what legal mechanisms would be available to you to consider.
It would be my belief that if in fact you're going to proceed and expend funds to clean it up on behalf of someone else, and if it's privately held property, that the commission would have to set up a receivable equal to that amount to be charged back against the property or the property holder, because the county would have to get ultimately, at the exchange the property, get the funds back, so you wouldn't be spending public funds on private property.
I would assume that you would want some kind of a lien procedure that would at least arguably give you a chance to recover it back. Yeah, I, I really can't just send county personnel and equipment out to, to mow somebody's yard, you, you have, you have a duty to try to recover, for whatever possible reason it may be, speaking of enforcement of the regulation.
David Adkins?
I'm just, for clarification, Joe, a year or so back when we were having discussions about the problems at Valid U subdivision, we looked at the possibility of going in and fixing the roads up to standard, which would be the minimum qualifications that the planning commission requires, and placing a lien on the unsold lots that are in that subdivision. And I believe, if my memory serves, at that time, the attorney was, our, the planning commission attorney is Reed Trappman, but I don't remember who offered an opinion, but the opinion was from CTA that the county could not place a lien in that manner to recover the funds for those roads.
Could you not do a special assessment?
You could do a special assessment.
That, that was, there was a special assessment procedure that's done under a separate statute, which, which specifically authorizes the county to do that. That's different from what we're talking about here.
That's why I was wanting just some clarification.
The legislature has seen fit to give you that authority by statute in the instance of roads, it hasn't given you that authority for overrun.
Marie?
Real quick, if we did any type of resolution, you cannot, we just have to count them wide, you couldn't say in subdivisions that don't have an HOA or anything, it would have to be a blanket? We have so much farmland, you don't want to cross the line or trying to...
Well, that's, that's why you have to determine what, what you meant, and makes plain, I, it's my understanding that you can't spot regulate, you know, that it would have to be something that would be across the board.
But could you state it impossibly to where it could be subdivisions that do not have an HOA homeowners association?
That's something that we could look at. My, my ultimate opinion, which I don't normally give you, would be no, but, but we could look at it and see.
Try to find, figure out a way to help get what he's wanting done without trying to go...
You could, you could probably look at some of the municipalities, so some of them have farmland in them as well, and they, they are able, able to put these regulations on that it doesn't affect those folks adversely.
In the instance of the roads that Commissioner Adkins asked about, you know, the, the state has said you have the authority to do that under the existing law. You ask too many questions about that, they may give you another one of these unfunded mandates, you're required to take your own equipment and clean this up.
Okay.
Go mow it, Scott.
Go mow it, we'll, we'll move on. We'll mow it tomorrow.
It's not as easy, it sounds to me, but, but details are always where you run into problems.
But it's countywide, it's countywide law.
I think it would have to...
I don't have any. Okay, moving on, we'll go to Bobby White, he has something about the insurance.
We had an insurance committee meeting, and, uh, with Iggy Hill, brought us the quotes for insurance for next year, and, and we had some bids, and so I would like to call Mr. Ruthford up to the mic and let him kinda explain to you, David, you'll come up, and, and we are, we voted to stay with the same group that we had last year. First was local government insurance pool with, with the county general, and the other was Tennessee Risk Management for the Board of Education.
So you're making that recommendation?
I make the recommendation that we...
I'll second.
And, uh, Mr. Ruthford is here to answer any questions that any of the members might have.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion? We're staying with the ones that we have for our insurance needs.
The names of the... Uh, local government insurance pool...
For the...
For the county general.
Yeah.
And Tennessee Risk Management Trust for the Board of Education.
Anybody? Tom Hatmaker?
David, the, the one that we're staying with, did they have the low bid?
They had it, I don't have it.
The only bid. Okay.
The, the people who did the V O E, we offered to let them look at the county general, and we offered vice versa, and no one was interested. In addition to that, I contacted the usual other standard insurance companies that are involved, one is Trattler St. Paul, and the other is Montgomery Insurance, and they aren't, they were not interested in bidding.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
May...
Bobby?
Uh, statement.
Sure.
Uh, this was improved with the insurance committee when we met last, yeah, weekend.
Okay, any other questions? David Adkins?
Just something quick, our workman's comp claims, are they down any at all?
They were actually down this year a little bit in the, well, today, maybe this year, in the Board of Education, Mr. Evans did remark that in the letter, it's in this package, that they were down, but overall, there, there's, both accounts are still losing money on what we found. They aren't quite as bad as you did, and there's some information in the package that you can look at that would show you that, but they're still losing money.
Okay, we're...
That's long term, like five-year loss ratios are well over that percentage.
Anybody else have a question? Ready to vote? All those in favor of our insurance staying with the same folks that we've had in the past? Vote yes, then press your confirm button. Those opposed vote no. Johnny Bruce?
I think I need to state our conflict.
Sue Nance? Terry Singley?
So everybody has conflict.
Alvin Evans? Anyone else? All these folks state that they have a conflict, but are voting anyway. Okay, all, we've already done the vote, anybody wish to change your vote? Show us the vote, ma'am. Fourteen yes, Bob Walden absent. Marie?
Were you all leaving?
Budget meeting.
Oh, yeah. Budget finance, what, schedule?
Budget, yes.
We need to get started, the year-end meeting will be the 28th, of course, the question is, will anybody be here on the fifth, July the fifth, after the holidays? Do you want to begin budget meetings on that Thursday, or hold it until following? We'll have a regular on the night.
We think, we will not, we will not have a budget meeting on July the fifth?
Mark it out on the...
Mark it out.
So our first budget meeting is the night?
The night.
I need it six, five.
Hold it, we, we can take that, hold it. We need a motion to recess until June the 28th at 6 o'clock to do our year-end meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Sue Nance makes the motion, Steve Ruthford seconded the motion. Do we need everybody to vote on that? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of recess until June the 28th at 6 o'clock? Vote yes, then press your confirm button, those opposed vote no.